All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners the September 11th, 2014, and ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to take the role.
Well, good morning, Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Commissioner Schrader is excused. Would please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, today is Patriot Day, a national day of service and remembrance. Thirteen years ago to the day, our country was brutally and senselessly attacked by terrorists. Thousands of innocent Americans were killed by simply going to work at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon. Rescue workers were killed, bystanders were killed. It was ridiculous and senseless. To honor the memory of all those individuals and the families they left behind, please join me in a moment of silence. We also want to take this opportunity to thank our everyday heroes who keep us all safe, including our troops, we're certain that, emergency responders, fire and law enforcement, 911 dispatchers, and all county workers especially that may be in harm's way. The health, safety, and comfort of our community is enhanced by their professionalism, dedication, resourcefulness, and integrity of these individuals, agencies, and departments. Thank you. And on with the business of the day. Mr. Krupp?
Well, the first item of Citizen's Communication.
Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up. It is Citizens Communication. And I have, this is a rare commodity, one card. And that is Ken Humbirdson. I hope I got that right.
Ken was one of the appointments to the Clackamas River Water Board that stepped up during a really tough time and appreciate the work you've done and also was elected to the position. Was it, when was that?
About a year and a half ago.
About a year and a half ago. And I'd say that, you know, we're very proud of the work you've done and the board's done to move the district beyond what was a very, very challenging time.
Yeah, you've provided great stability. Whenever you don't see it in the Oregonian again, they must be doing good. So, congratulations.
You stole my thunder on that one. Commissioner Ludlow, before I go on, I would like to say thank you. As a retired law enforcement officer myself, your acknowledgement of the first responders in the beginning this morning was appreciated. So, thank you very much, sir. I just came this morning to give you a brief update on where we are at Clackamas River Water. I'm sure you're aware that we provide an awful lot of the water for many of the large employers in Clackamas County. And so, our services are somewhat important as far as the economic viability of this county is concerned. As you've already noted, most of our legal issues have been resolved. One of the most recent ones was recently resolved in our favor just a few days ago. It may be appealed, but we have every reason to believe that we will continue to prevail. We had formed a 190 agreement with Sunrise Water Authority. It was something that was controversial as far as Oregon City was concerned. So, myself and a couple of other elected officials, along with elected officials from Oregon City, sat down and we negotiated a solution to that problem and an agreement for both organizations that meet the needs of both without having to go to court and spend thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars and ratepayer dollars on government agencies suing one another. So, we're very happy that we were able to do that. On that 190 agreement with Sunrise, we have begun to find savings for both districts, begun the integration process for engineering and administration. And as we get through the different divisions of both organizations, we expect to see thousands of dollars in savings for both organizations. We just completed a multimillion-dollar generator project in partnership with PG&E that should make sure that if there is a power outage, we can provide water to our customers regardless of the emergency, except of course if the pipes break, which is a whole other issue that we are working on. We also had our 50th anniversary for the water plant. And I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but it was, as they say, "A good time had by all." Clackamas River Water intends to be a leader in the science of water quality. And to that end, we have a PhD on our staff who is working with Clackamas Community College. Students are doing water sampling to build a database. And what we hope to be able to do, especially because we are one of the furthest ones upstream, is if there is a pollution event, if there is a toxic event from algae or whatnot like that, we'll be able to get a handle on it much quicker than we were able to do before. We won't have to send all of our testing down to Klamath Falls or, not Klamath Falls, excuse me, South. Let me put it that way. I'm losing that, and I need to get done, I know.
No, go ahead, Ken. We have the luxury of nobody else in line, so go ahead.
Well, thank you. Anyway, our intention is to be ahead of the curve and to be able to share that information with other water treatment plants that are downstream from us. It is our intention to be a cooperative agency with other agencies. And finally, on that note, we are exploring an emergency intertie with Portland. Those preliminary discussions have begun. That's going to be a long-term, expensive project, but should they have a major emergency with water, or should we? We believe it's in the best interest of the region to have a cooperative agreement where we can help each other. And so, we have begun that process. And that's all I have, commissioners. Thank you very much.
As a member of the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization and Nancy Bush, I hope your organization communicates with her regularly, but of course, emergency preparedness is one of the most important things out there. When those services we are so spoiled receiving, whether it be sewer, let alone water, certainly the basics, roof over your head, warm food to eat, and some heat, they're very important. But, you know, I often remind people, and that includes, of course, it affects your organization as well, we have 282 bridges. And so, if something were to happen to even several bridges, it could create a big problem in repairing that which you found you need to do, correct?
Well, and some of our pipes go across those very bridges.
Yes, they do.
You're absolutely correct. You can go a couple of weeks without food, about three days without water, so.
True. Tudy?
Yeah, I'm happy you're working with Clackamas Community College. Don't, they have a degree program there in some type of water science to train people to go into this industry.
Exuing treatment.
What is it called? I don't remember. But they do have, because I know of a couple of young folks who have gone into that area of study, and, you know, it's a great program because there's obviously a need for that.
I'm not aware of which degree programs they have there, but we do view Clackamas Community College as an employment pipeline for our district and we believe for other districts. So.
Good. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. And now, Mr. Krupp, you're on board.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we have the reading and adoption of previously approved land use ordinances, and we have three scheduled for this morning. The first is consideration of adoption of Zoning and Development Ordinance 249, amendments to the Urban Residential Zoning District provisions of the Comprehensive Plan, and the ZDO. And I'm going to invite Mr. Nate Boderman from the County Council's office to give a staff report.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel. What we have for you today is three separate orders related to the Year Two ZDO Code Audit Project, which is part of the Planning Division's work program for last fiscal year. This represents the final step in adopting comprehensive amendments to the ZDO and the Comprehensive Plan, really aimed at cleaning up our code and making it more user-friendly. Year Two of the Code Audit Project includes amendments related to the county's urban, commercial, and mixed-use zones, the urban residential zones, and the procedures for processing land use applications and legislative proposals. Public hearings on ZDO 249 were held before the Planning Commission on June 23rd and before the Board of Commissioners on July 30th, 2014. At the close of the Board of Commissioners' hearing, the board voted unanimously to approve ZDO 249 as recommended by staff and directed staff to prepare the order materials that are in front of you today. Public hearings on ZDO 250 were held before the Planning Commission on June 9th and before the Board of Commissioners on July 16th, 2014. At the close of that hearing, the board voted unanimously to approve ZDO 250 as recommended by staff, except that references to taverns, bars, cocktail lounges, and proposed Section 510 of the ZDO were to be deleted to reflect the board's direction to eliminate the regulatory distinctions in the code between these establishments and restaurants. Staff has prepared the order materials in front of you today, consistent with that direction. Finally, public hearings on ZDO 248 were held before the Planning Commission on June 9th and before the Board of Commissioners on July 16th, 2014. At the close of that hearing, the board voted unanimously to approve ZDO 248 as recommended by staff with the following changes: removal of the proposed increase in property owner notification, distances for Type III land use permit applications in the rural and natural resource zones, and the addition of language to the provisions for initiating Type IV legislative land use proposals, which is intended to clarify that initiating a legislative proposal does not obligate the county to further process that proposal. Staff has prepared the order materials in front of you today, consistent with that direction. In addition to the substantive changes I've just mentioned, staff has made housekeeping changes to finalize the orders, really for quality control, formatting, and consistency purposes. The ordinance before you today makes those changes I have described and reflect that which was voted and approved as I've previously described. As I mentioned today, we do have three separate orders, so we do need three separate votes for each ordinance to take effect. The materials that Mary has prepared will help us navigate those three orders, but beyond that, I don't have anything else. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Commissioners, have any clarifying questions? I'll ask for a motion to read the three ZDO amendments by title only.
I move we read ZDO 249, 250, and 248 by title only.
I'll second that. All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. I'll ask the clerk to read ZDO 249, 250, and 248 by title only.
Okay. Ordinance number ZDO 249, and ordinance amending Chapter 4, 6, and 10 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Sections 106, 202, 309, 312, 314, 601, 602, 824, 825, 903, 1005, 1009, 1012, 1014, 1016, 1018, 1102, 1203, 1206, and 1600 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, ZDO, adopting Sections 315, 838, and 839 of the ZDO, and repealing Sections 301, 302, 303, 304, 311, 313, 1603, 1604, 1605, and 1706 of the ZDO.
And that's title only, folks.
And that's just one of them.
Oh, gracious.
Okay, now?
All right. Commissioner Smith?
No.
I have two more to read.
She has to read them all three.
Okay. The next one is ordinance number ZDO 250, and ordinance amending Chapter 4, 8, and 10 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Section 103, 315, 504, 601, 602, 827, 838, 839, 1001, 1005, 1007, 1009, 1010, 1011, 1012, 1015, 1016, 1102, 1104, 1202, 1203, 1204, and 1206 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, ZDO, adopting Sections 510, 511, 512 of the ZDO, and repealing Sections 501, 502, 503, 507, 508, 509, 1600, 1602, 1606, 1607, 1608, 1700, 1701, 1702, and 1703, 1704, and 1707 of the ZDO. And one more. Ordinance number ZDO 248, and ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Section 106, 202, 305, 306, 307, 308, 309, 310, 312, 314, sorry, this is just so much, 401, 406, 407, 504, 505, 601, 702, 703, 704, 705, 706, 707, 708, 709, 710, 711, 712, 713, 813. I'm sorry, it's just so much, it's making me laugh. 818, 822, 829, 830, 835, 837, 1002, 1011, 1013, 1016, 1018, 1102, 1103, 1105, 1106, 1107, 1202, 1203, 1204, 1205, and 1206 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, ZDO, adopting Section 1307, 1308, 1309, 1310, and of the ZDO, and repealing Sections 104, 105, 1201, 1301, 1302, 1303, 1304, 1305, 1400, 1500 of the ZDO. Phew.
So, I have some questions on 827.
10-4.
And that was our very able Commissioner Clerk Mary Rathke. Almost a round of applause for that. I'm sure Nate was checking everything as she went along, right? I would recognize Commissioner Smith.
Mary, you need a drink after that. No, I'm getting water.
I move we adopt ZDO 249, amendments to the Urban Residential Zoning District provisions of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance as previously approved at the July 30, 2014, public land use hearing.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any discussion? No, Jim, you can't. All right. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 250.
I move we adopt ZDO 250 amendments to the Urban Commercial and Mixed Use Zoning District provisions of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and the Zoning and Development Ordinance as previously approved at the July 16, 2014, public land use hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any discussion?
1104, 1106, 1112, 1418. A little confused on what those were. I thought it's only 1020.
We're going to take you in the back room after this meeting and tell you, explain all that to you. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Or Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 248.
I move we adopt ZDO 248, amendment to land use permit application procedural standards of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance as previously approved at the July 16, 2014, public land use hearing.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. And now, it's time for public hearings. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have two public hearings this morning. The first is the second reading of ordinance number 04, 2014, amending Title VI of the Clackamas County Code, Smoking Regulations in and Around County Facilities. County Council Stephen Madcor will give you your report.
Good morning, commissioners. Stephen Madcor, County Council, and we are presenting to you this morning the second reading of an amendment to Chapter 6.04 of the county code. And what it is doing, it is a housekeeping amendment to the smoking ordinance that we currently have in place. By housekeeping, I mean we're clarifying some things and we're adding some things. We're prohibiting the use of smokeless tobacco. We are also prohibiting the use of e or vapor cigarettes in county buildings, county lease facilities, county property, and within 25 feet of a county entrance, entrance to a county building itself. Also prohibiting the use of those items in county-owned vehicles. This would be the second reading of the ordinance. It was presented to the board in April of this year. The first reading was on the 21st of August. And if the board were to proceed, it would be effective immediately as an amendment to our code.
All right. Commissioners, have any clarifying questions of Mr. Madcor?
Well, does this include county parks?
Good question.
It would include county parks, but not those that are under the control of the Parks District. That is a separate governing body, and if they wanted to adopt these, they would have to incorporate them into their own regulations.
So, a district, you're talking about NCPRD?
That is correct.
Otherwise, in our normal county parks, it will be enforceable?
It would be county-owned and leased property. That is correct.
I think that should be special note to people that attend our parks, Barton, Carver, et cetera, Riverside, that that is the case. I assume that that will be posted at those places?
There are, I believe, posting requirements as well. There, it will be designated smoking areas as well. It's primarily within certain distances of buildings and areas.
All right. Commissioner Savis?
Well, so I assume that applies to all the other districts then, where they're not part of this.
If they are special districts, let's say a 451 to 266, our county ordinance would not apply to them. They have a separate governing body unless they were to adopt them. Does that make sense? Yeah?
All right. And so, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. There being none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the motion. Oh, did you want to speak?
I was going to speak.
Well, then, I'm going to reopen the public hearing. You should always, there's some cards out there, and eventually Mary does need a card from you. You could do it after you speak, sir. Yeah, just so she gets your information. That's great. Just have a seat. Tell us where you're from and who you are and...
My name's Jeff Borkwist.
Come close to the microphone if you can.
Sorry. My name's Jeff Borkwist. I work for a company called Emerald Vapors. We have five stores in the Eugene-Springfield area, and we're looking at opening up a fifth store that's really close to the Clackamas County lines. And we've been the vapor industry for about two years, and I'm just a little confused just because it seems like smokers' rights have been kind of condensed and taken away for so long. And the electronic cigarette industry was invented to give people a chance to have an option to get away from smoking and stop smoking. I was a smoker for 10 years, and I smoked like a pack, a pack and a half a day, and it just gave me that, a little bit of freedom again. And I didn't, I liked smelling like an ashtray. I didn't like the looks I got from people. I didn't like feeling embarrassed about smoking cigarettes for so long. And it just gave me an option. I also have close friends and family that were just so grateful to have this as an option. And just being able to take it away and saying, oh, treating it like cigarettes again, really kind of, it really hurts, and it also hurts our business if we can't use and allow people to taste in our stores or around the stores. It just kind of puts us back in that category of smokers that we've tried to separate and distinguish ourselves for so long for. I also have really close friends in the military, Lieutenant Colonel Bruce Turner. He fought in Vietnam. Both of his sons died in Iraq. And he had the same issue where he'd always get really angry with anybody coming to him and tell him to put out his cigarettes. So, he switched over to vaping. And he also had the same experience where he had that freedom back and he had that option where people weren't judging him and treating him any different. And it really is a non-combustible device that uses a heating element, a battery, and it vaporizes the nicotine-based e-liquid. And as far as it being a non-combustible device, I think that's kind of the key word to kind of, I mean, if the concern is for fire safety or anything like that, I mean, there has been any, there's no stores that have caught on fire or anything like that because of it. And I just would really like to kind of advocate for any other business owners and for just kind of the freedom of vapors and electronic cigarette users.
You know, I want you to understand, I hope you do, Jeff, this pertains only to Clackamas County-owned properties.
Right.
So, it has nothing to do with what you do around your store, and in fact, we invite you to move your business to Clackamas County. But it has nothing to do with any of the things that we've addressed for employees and our property here. So, we're not restricting anything but just the few properties we lease and the properties we own. So, you can otherwise carry on. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, actually, I was going to make the same statement. It has nothing to do with private facilities, driving down the road, none of those things. So, it is strictly, you know, our facilities. And, you know, we do own a lot of housing. And a few, a year or so ago, we restricted smoking in those facilities, and the people have been able to adapt to that. I live in, I used to live in Villebois, and they usually moved the facility out to the parking lots, a smoking, designated smoking area. So, it doesn't have any effect on private...
County Council, Mr. Madcor?
Just testing to see if my light worked. No, apparently it doesn't. I apologize. There's a clarification. This applies to county buildings and county vehicles and within 25 feet of county buildings. So, if there's no building per se on a county park, it doesn't apply to the open spaces associated with that. So, there would be designated smoking spots 25 feet away from entrance, which is consistent with state law, which is what we currently provide at all county, the majority of county facilities currently. This would be outside. The reason for the e-vaping prohibition is we did have people e-vaping within county facilities themselves, and it was causing disruption for coworkers, visitors, and users of the facility. That was basically the main impetus behind this as well.
It's that old adage, "Your rights end where mine began." If people have to ingest somebody else's expenditures, then that's where we're drawing the line in this particular case. I appreciate your time. I hope you understand. Did you have anything more?
The last thing I would say is just, I completely understand where you're coming from and to, if I were to smoke in here, vape in here, I could see how that would cause a disruption. However, I would just say that this would be one step closer to becoming like, okay, now let's ban it around businesses. Okay, let's make it closer to cigarettes, and let's have the same kind of restrictions. And that was my only concern, is it's one step closer to kind of putting us in that category, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of...
Jeff, I would assure you, I know this commission pretty well.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen on our watch.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for your testimony today.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. If you could fill out a card for Mary, like I said, both of you could do that. That'd be great. It's a requirement... that'd be great, it's a requirement that we keep track of who's, come on forward, that we keep track of who speaks.
Good morning. You'll have to excuse me, I'm a little bit sick, I drove up from San Francisco last night, so. My name's Justin Newman, I represent SEVADA Oregon, Smoke Free, it, SEVADA?
SEVADA.
It's a smoke-free association. Our goal is to eliminate smoking throughout the United States, there's a national organization and many local chapters. I'm also involved with Representative Tomai's board.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone or pull it up to you? It move, actually, does that one move, Mary?
Yeah.
I think it does.
I'm also on Representative Tomai's e-cigarette work group here in Oregon. There's about thirty, thirty-five folks from the body part organizations involved. The reason I bring that up, I think a lot of the policy that we've been working on would actually apply to Clackamas, just as it applies to Multnomah County, and Lane and some of the others. We have two more sessions to work on that, so I don't know if you guys are involved or would like to get involved, but I would suggest looking at that before implementing any of this code, this being suggested.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
You want to ban all smoking in America, does that include marijuana?
I can't, I can't comment on that professionally, personally...
But it's smoking, why can't you comment on it?
I don't, I don't believe in cannabis, but that's my personal view...
What does your association have a position on that?
We don't get involved in cannabis.
You know, smoking is smoking and tobacco is tobacco, and I would think the second-hand smoke for marijuana would be much more harmful than the second-hand smoke from a regular cigarette. So I think that if you want consistency and respect for your policies, you need to address all smoking. I'm not that...
That's my, that's my view. SEVADA believes that combustible products are bad, so...
So does the work group take a position on smoking marijuana?
You're talking about Representative Tomai's?
Tomai's work group, yes.
We've discussed it lightly.
Well, again, I would submit to that work group, if you wanted to invite me to come, I would say to them, smoking is smoking, and the second-hand smoke from marijuana is much more harmful than the second-hand smoke from marijuana. I don't think we can have it both ways in our society, ban cigarettes, but yet marijuana can be smoke-free wherever, just because I have a card for it or because it becomes legal?
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Okay.
Berkeley, actually, if I may share, I was at Berkeley's city council meeting on Tuesday, and I was very surprised that they grouped tobacco, cigarettes, smoking, with e-cigarettes, and yet excluded marijuana, cannabis. It blew my mind.
No, it has been said that one marijuana cigarette is equivalent to at least ten tobacco cigarettes, so two is right.
I've heard up to thirty.
Was it, did you?
Yeah.
It's just incredible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, I'm now going to make sure I'm in the right spot. I move we read ordinance number oh four dash two oh one four by title only.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, this better be a lot shorter, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, this is a nice one, I like this one. Ordinance number oh four dash two zero one four, and ordinance amending Chapter six point zero four, smoking regulations in and around county facilities of the Clackamas County Code.
I'll ask for a motion.
I move we adopt ordinance number zero four dash two zero one four, amending Title Six of the Clackamas County Code, smoking regulations in and around county facilities.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion?
Just like to say, you know, I appreciate that what Clackamas County is doing is, you know, known around, I don't know if you're actually from San Francisco, but to come all this way to testify, we really appreciate it, and the gentleman who opposed the e-cigarette motion, I'm glad people are thinking about this issue and that you have taken the time to come and speak to us, so thank you.
Thank you, well said. All right, any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. Mr. Crupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the second public hearing of the morning is consideration of first reading of an ordinance that would amend Chapter two point zero five of the county code relating to personnel policies and procedures for Clackamas County employees. Christina Thacker from the county council's office will give a report. Before she does that, I did want to make a quick recognition of Mr. Mark Stodak, who is sitting in the audience and who had a role in preparing this package. Mark is the Assistant Director of Employee Services, is visiting here on his last opportunity to be present at a regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Clackamas County before he departs to Colorado. I want to thank him for his great work and wish him well on his future endeavors.
Yeah, congratulations, Mark, we were told of this a little while ago, and certainly had our last meeting with you, I believe it was on Tuesday. Thank you very much for your service. And now, Christina?
Good morning, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, my name is Christina Thacker, I'm with the Office of County Council, and I'm here this morning to present the first reading of the Chapter two point zero five amendments to the county code, which relates to personnel policies and procedures for Clackamas County employees. The primary changes are clerical in nature to correct errors, also to update the code to comply with changes in Oregon law specifically relating to leaves of absence for bereavement. Additional changes include other leaves of absence provisions, as well as several work rules for employee conduct, for example, relating to anti-retaliation provisions, use of county computers, and other work rules. DS has negotiated these changes with unions regarding mandatory subjects of bargaining, and I am here for recommendation of the first reading in title only. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, Commissioners, any questions of Christina? No. All right, so, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. The late Kemmers, all right. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis, and I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number zero five dash two zero one...
I gotta finish my verbiage here. You wrote this for me, so I'm going to make sure. Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time?
No, I have to read first and then you'll say that.
Ask the clerk to... I need to be retrained. All right, fine.
Okay, this is ordinance number zero five dash two zero one four, and ordinance amending Chapter two point zero five, personnel policies and procedures of the Clackamas County Code.
All right. Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? No. I'll announce the second reading will be on September twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, at the regularly scheduled business meeting at ten AM. So, that being done, thank you Christina.
Thank you Commissioners.
It's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda for September eleventh, two thousand fourteen, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a grant agreement, amendment number one, for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, supportive housing programs for the HOPE Two Leasing Program for the purpose of providing permanent housing. Approval of a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuum of Care Program for the Continuum of Care Planning. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for right-of-way acquisitions related to the Pudding River Whiskey Hill Road Bridge Replacement Project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Service District Number One for the Southeast Mabel and Southeast Webster Drainage Improvement Project. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for fiscal year fourteen fifteen, early adopter food scrap collection activities under the Department of Emergency Management. Approval of a cooperative agreement with Rhododendron Water Association for the use of Clackamas County Emergency Notification System. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Canby Utility for the use of Clackamas County Emergency Notification System. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for funding to conduct specialist interview training. Board order canceling delinquent manufactured structure personnel, personal property taxes from the assessor's office. Board order canceling delinquent personal property tax accounts from the assessor's office. Resolution appointing Justice of the Peace Pro Tem for the Clackamas County Justice of the Peace District, that's through our justice court. Under Juvenile Department, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for juvenile assessment and evaluation beds. Under Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the City of Happy Valley for the Cedar Waste Dream Stabilization Project. Approval of a joint funding agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the U.S. Geological Survey for Creek Flow Measuring Work. Approval of a joint funding agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and the U.S. Geological Survey for Cooperative Hydraulic Monitoring Work in the Johnson Creek Watershed. Approval of a joint funding agreement between the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and the U.S. Geology Survey for Toowallatin River Monitoring. Approval of amendment number one to the agreement to furnish professional services between Clackamas County Service District Number One and CH Two M Hill Engineers, Inc., for the Stage Two of the Kellogg Water Pollution Control Plant Outfall Improvement Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, do the Commissioners want to remove any item? I'll ask for a motion.
I move. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. And so, we go into county administrator update, it passes four zero, by the way, I have to declare that. Yes, Mr. Crupp?
Yes, I have a number of items for you this morning. The first is a piece of business following the recess that had been in effect over the course of the past couple of weeks. I do need to read into the record the approval of contracts that your county administrator had made during the course of the past two weeks. Our very skillful clerk will then make sure that this information gets placed into the official minutes, so it's an official part of the public record, so. With that, I, during the course of the recess, I did approve eight specific contracts and/or intergovernmental agreements. The first involved a contract for technology services in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to contract with Unifi to upgrade our telephone server in the Development Services Building. The second contract involved the Department of Transportation and Development, and it was for the purchase of two Caterpillar loaders at a cost of, a net cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Then, on behalf of NCPRD, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, I approved a contract with GSE Incorporated for the construction of the playground at Hoodview Park, the contract in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Then, we did two, I did two approvals of change orders involving two community development block grant projects. The first involved an addition of ninety-eight thousand dollars for, of community development block grant funds for frontage improvements in the city of Gladstone. The additional monies were provided so we could expand the project and do more work out there for the city. And the second one involved the remodeling, restoration work for the Irma Tinker House Project in Oregon City. This included ninety-two thousand dollars worth of additional work that was added to the project to complete that restoration project. Then, the sixth contract actually is an intergovernmental agreement. It's between the county and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This then gives us access to a hundred and ten thousand dollars for our ready-to-rent program to reduce housing barriers. And the seventh contract is a agency service contract with Coda Incorporated to provide outpatient mental health services, and this is a rate-based contract for services provided to patients. And then, finally, the last and eighth contract is an intergovernmental agreement, and it's between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Clackamas River Water, and this is to reimburse Clackamas River Water in the amount of about eleven thousand dollars for conducting waterline stabilization that is a part of the Mabel Lane Project. And so those are the contracts I approved.
You got something else?
I do, yes, so quite a bit of good news. One, I wanted to share some feedback with you, this was from a customer or citizen regarding our recently completed safety improvements at the Barlow Road Zimmerman Road intersection, and I'll just quote what we heard. "I am so impressed with the design and execution of this project that I had to say, 'Well done.' I live off Barlow, and the detour during the summer was worth the outcome, please relay my thanks." And so the newly repaved and striped intersection is, was open to traffic on Friday, August the twenty-ninth. I just want to say thanks to the team of folks over at DTD for the good work they did with that project. Then I wanted to let you know that the Oregon Department of Transportation has approved two projects for state transportation growth management grant funds, and both projects will have our staff working closely with the local community to improve traffic safety and options for residents in these areas. The one project involves building off the recently completed Mount Hood multimodal transportation plan and has us partnering with the villages at Mount Hood to identify and design safe crossings of Highway twenty-six near the communities of Welch's and Zigzag. And the second project involves just outside of Clackamas Regional Center, and will provide funds for staff to work with the community to improve Monroe Street, which is an important community connection in that particular area. Both projects are expected to begin in the spring of two thousand fifteen. I wanted to express thanks to those who worked with Clackamas River Enforcement and Ecology, our work group there for the new signage at Barton and Carver Parks. We've got banners and signages on kiosks and information about safety tips and wearing life jackets and alcohol use and safety and river cleanliness and stewardship. In fact, I was just out at both parks yesterday evening looking around and got a chance to see the signs in place, so. So there are still some warm weeks ahead, and so I just want to encourage folks to be safe out there on the river. And then con- committing with that, and you'll probably say something about this too, Chair Ludlow, just want to acknowledge the fact that on Sunday, September seventh, was the annual Down the River Cleanup, and I guess there were over four hundred participants in that program, and that cleaned up the lower fifteen miles of the Clackamas River by picking up over sixty thousand pounds of trash. That's pretty outstanding, so. And then finally, I wanted to remind everyone that as of Monday, September the fifteenth, we'll be launching the new Clackamas County website, and this is a culmination of what we refer to as a reimagination of the website that began in the fall of two thousand... to as a re-imagination of the website that began in the fall of 2013. The new website, which is still at the same website address of www.clackamas.us, includes enhanced mobile support, better search capabilities, and a more clean and more modern appearance. So, we believe that residents and the staff and others who use the website will find it easier to use and to navigate. We're not expecting there to be any difficulties or troubles with the, with the transition. It's going to be implemented over the course of the weekend, but would certainly encourage folks to contact us if they encounter any problems, so. That's my report.
Wow, you're getting really long-winded, aren't you? One thing, on our way to, my way to the town hall last night in Estacada, I went the back way, as they call it, and I'm down to 211, but passed over that Zimmerman Intersection. What an incredible improvement for safety that that is, extremely well done. It's always nice to see that we can parlay some federal money also for these kinds of dangerous intersections. Secondarily, would you put on your issues list next week that, I'd like to know if we really have to continue to, we give you authority when we are taking recesses or we are all gone, we don't have a quorum, to go ahead and sign contracts. All of those are contained in the budget, except for, of course, change orders, which are still contained in the contingency funds held for that particular project. So, I, I think it's, I personally think it's unnecessary to go through that, just send us a list and that's that. If it's required by law that you read it into the record, I think we need to relook at that, and we can talk as a commission in that regard.
Sure.
So, now, it's time for commissioners' communication, and I'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last night in Estacada, we had a town hall. It's thoroughly enjoyable, fairly well-attended, but lot of lively conversation. A lot of the issues that came up, I think, have to do with our rural communities and our small towns. Estacada is not unlike a lot of our small towns in Clackamas County and really a lot of counties across Oregon. One of the issues, I'm just going to read through a few of them, jobs for kids. Their kids in the summer don't have anything to do, and the loss of their natural resource industries like logging and the sawmilling, a lot of the ancillary jobs that go with them are really lost in that community, whereas in Estacada, our natural resources are one of the most attractive, economically viable things there are, and we're not able to use them like we would like. Transportation and connectivity is, is a word used from getting to point A to point B, and they like their Trimat out there because they can take Trimat to get into Oregon City, Clackamas Community College, and other parts, and it's useful for the kids getting to school or whatever. And we talked about enhancements and maybe what the county could do to help on that, and we don't have anything solid yet, but transportation in the county is always an issue. Land use and the fact that many of our state laws govern the land use in Clackamas County, where the county doesn't always make the decisions for landowners. Certain things are allowed, for instance, a non-conforming use that some people object to, but yet, we hear about it, but we don't always have the say in that. They have an abandoned mill site and wanted to know what they could do about it. That's probably a good question for anybody. I recommended they talk to the owner, and they talk to our economic development team here at the county to see what kind of mitigation and possible cleanup on that. We tried to identify some problems, and whereas Estacada is so rich in its natural resources, it also enhances their recreation. There's only 10 kayak permits allowed a year on the Clackamas River for guides to take kayakers down, and I thought that was so erroneous and cumbersome, and that really cuts into some of the economics that be going, going in Estacada, so we're going to try to work at that at a federal level, try to find out how or why that policy ever existed. And they would also like more mushroom picking. That, again, is a permitted use, and it's limited, which I don't think it really should be. I think we should be allowed to use our natural resources. And that kind of piggybacks on, we had a big presentation from our Tourism Committee or Council, and they too would like more access to our federal lands to enhance our tourism. So, I asked, what would you like? If you had access, what would you like on that? And they had a whole list, which includes mushroom picking, which include trails for bikes, horses, hiking, cross-country skiing, foraging, anything that you can think of. You know, when I was growing up, people would, used to go up into the, to the woods and firewood cutting. You know, you could cut up the dead trees lying on the ground and have all that use as well. So, these things have really been cut off from the citizens, and that's an issue that I'm working hard on with Association of Oregon Counties, less federal control of our federal lands, trying to get them open back up for our citizens to use because they, after all, they are for us. So, it was a good conversation, and I appreciated my fellow commissioners contributing to the conversations as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, what do they do with the cans they find? Are you going to Fred Meyer's, putting each one in?
No, but, you know, that's an interesting question because the canned beer especially, you say, you know, the aluminum value is probably pretty negligible, but there's a five cent reward there. So, we tried to separate them. My understanding is, unfortunately, that they didn't turn them in for the five cents because it's cumbersome, and they just melted them down, but that just means more money into the state account.
So, 9/11. I was mayor of Milwaukee on 9/11, and, and I thought, you know, what a terrible tragedy, and how would a small community deal with it? I remember how frightening it was to think that that could have occurred in a small town, and would we have had the resources or the support should that occur, and, you know, the disaster planning that, I think, right after that, we started some disaster planning, partnering with the county and the various communities, but I remember how frightening that was. I had a consultant in my office from Las Vegas, and I think we watched it on television. I saw the first, or the second plane hit the tower, and it was just unbelievable. What a terrible tragedy. And in a lot of ways, that set us, well, not in a lot of ways, we did go to war. A lot of people lost their lives to protect our communities. Oh, aye. Just flew in from Australia.
Oh, that's your friends.
It was the carpenter. He's been waiting for you. He has a lot of work for you at his farm.
Yeah. And speaking of that, my wife Danielle and I are celebrating our fifth anniversary tomorrow, and, and when you think back on 9/11, and you think about your, your family at home, and, and how would you get to them, it's, it's very important to have that, that great partner at home, you know, and, and you need a plan to get together with your family. Anyway, today is, is, it, I think the Clackamas River Project and the work we've done to limit alcohol on the river has, and I don't know what the pounds were last year, do you know? Does anybody know that? Seems like a lot.
Forty-eight, I believe, thousand.
Oh.
This was outstanding.
Yeah. So, you had more people there this year or less?
This is more, 400 was bigger than last year. It was incredible turnout. I'll do a little reporting on that.
Also, I just want to remind people about the farmers' markets. You can look that up at mounthoodterritory.com/farmer slash farmers dash market. They provide opportunities for local farmers to sell to you, and so please help support those, and they're all over the community, Boring, Malala, Westland, Wilsonville, Lakos, Wigo, Milwaukee, Oregon City, so please continue your support of the farmers' market.
Excellent.
Nice.
Commissioner Savis.
That's amazing how many there are.
Well, the, I am working as one of the liaisons to the county on the Area Commission on Transportation Oregon Consensus Program to find a solution, and I was a little bit, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of chatters. We get prepared for our September 22nd meeting this month, and, which will be our third meeting. However, this morning at the J-PAC meeting, we was, it was discussed there, and a lot of interesting, a lot of interesting dynamics. I'm a little bit disappointed that the regional body or the regional-minded people are not thinking very regionally when it comes to the act, and I once said, you know, I don't really don't think that that urban-rural divide discussion's really real, but it is. It's alive and well. And even though we have a tremendous amount of road miles in Clackamas County, as does Hood River County, which is a very small county, you know, they wanted, you know, there seems to be a preference for those larger cities like Portland and others that maybe they would rather see a separate, two separate acts. And, you know, ODOT's pretty well signaled that that may not be viable, that may not be approved by the Oregon Transportation Commission, so in essence, it goes nowhere if it's two. But, you know, when you look at the employment land issue around the region, and you look at the employment issue land, employment land issue in the county itself, we are, we've got some challenges ahead, and transportation constraints, we heard them last night, I heard them when I spoke to the mayors of the rural cities, that that is, that is a major issue. And as the region grows and grows and grows, you know, those populations are going to become more and more part of the commute shed, meaning people that go to work back and forth, and we know that 70% of the people who live in Clackamas County commute out of the county to go to work every day, 70%. That's a significant number. And a substantial amount of those folks are driving on our rural highways and roads every day, and they're getting beat up every day, and so, you know, I'm going to urge ODOT to try and look at a formula that somewhat makes sure that the road miles on the state highways, that the state gas tax monies are being paid for, are distributed in an equitable way to address that. I, I don't, I don't really think that having a majority of the Portland area population base on a regional committee is going to be very regional because really that, and they even, I mean, there was a couple of commenters this morning that made that case, that if it is heavily weighted on the Portland side of things, that the rural people might have a voice, but they won't have any, they won't have any effect or impact perhaps on, on how the dollars are allocated. So, I think that's a shame. It's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy where the big get bigger and the small remain small, and it's a, it's a huge challenge and a huge issue, so I'll, I'll be keeping my colleagues and people at this Clackamas County Corning and Committee and everyone surprised of, of how this all plays out. And I know that Representative Kenimer's been working really hard to try to get an act to put together for the rural areas, but I think the rural areas also need to recognize that the, the cities themselves and the constituents also have those concerns, and when they come into the urban area, that they're met with congestion and traffic congestion to get to the, get to work. So, we are wasting a lot of fuel, we're wasting a lot of time and resources, and that's just really affecting really our attractiveness in the, both in the region and the nation as far as trying to bring in new employers for new jobs, for new industries, so we can be a prosperous area. So, we're part of a regional body that doesn't want to be very regional, at least it appeared so this morning.
Did you have a clarification, Mr. Bernard?
Well, I, you know, I was involved in this discussion on act when it was first brought to our attention, that there was an act, and that the rural community really wanted one. And the only real argument that ODOT has was it's a lot of work. And it sounded to me like they didn't want to do the work, but our community was willing to do the work. And I, and I agree that there is a rural-urban divide, and like you said, they don't want to be that regional, the metro folks and people in Portland, and I think that's, that really identifies the problem, is that we need two acts. And I don't care if they're, if Portland metro region stays the way they are, but I do think that we need a rural act, and I don't care.
Yeah, well, but my, my, my response to that is that it has been indicated by the higher-ups in the state that a two-act solution is probably not a solution at all. It's really the demise, that this conversation may not go any farther. So, I think it's really imperative that, you know, the whole premise and idea rationale for an act is the roads. The roads are the fabric. Those are the connections that make, that make an act. So, when acts are formed, they're really based on a, on as much of a highway system as possible. So, here in Clackamas, we have six highways that go from urban to rural, and yet, the proposal is divide that in half, which is completely contrary to what an act's all about. I think that is why it will probably be rejected in the end.
Well, they wanted to close the bathroom in Government Camp too, but working with the right people, we made it stay open, and I think that's where we still need to put our efforts.
I don't know how you got a bathroom involved in this conversation, but that, I guess that's about ends that conversation, and it begins mine. Yes, I participated in the Clackamas River Cleanup, was asked to be on a boat with a very experienced man named Val Shaw, and a lovely woman named Kay, and I oared, she oared, and he steered, and we picked up four or 500 pounds of garbage. I was the garbage sorter. They said that with my job, that'd probably be really easy for me, so I sorted the recyclables versus none. The three most interesting things we found that day were a 10-by-10 rug, we also found a, a top of a, of a sock that said, "I heart haters." So, I thought that was pretty unusual, and we get to turn in the ones for the most unusual, but what I found was a lampshade, and I wore that a lot during the day because it was party time right after that. They threw a great party, and thank goodness for all the volunteers, there's a ton of organizations, I mean, literally 30-plus organizations involved in putting this together. Very efficient, whole bunch of kayakers buzzing around like little bees around our big boat, stopping, picking stuff up, and of course, dumping it on our boat, but it was very interesting, and again, an amalgamation of so many incredible people who took their time out that day to come out and help out our river. It looks good, but like one of the seasoned people said, "We cleaned it up last year, and it's all back again." Obviously, record amount to 30 tons of garbage, or I should say, refuse. You know, just briefly, I think people should know that this commission is involved in a lot of the committees and commissions, but one of our most important ones is to attend meetings at the, at the Association of Oregon Counties. And I see Bob Roman, our county assessor here, is also involved with that organization because to speak as a voice is a lot more effective. And so, we went through some interesting exercises there in different committees, and certainly, transportation is on our mind, and we, at our Tuesday sessions, you should all also know that we've renamed study work sessions to policy sessions because that's our only job here is to set policy, and we certainly cannot have the discussion, bring all of our staff in, and do it here during the business meetings because it would be extremely long. So, on Tuesdays, we tackle the tough issues and we make some decisions. So, if you want to know what the commission is doing, you have to listen in, it's not televised, but our Tuesday sessions are very important, several of which we had this last week, Tudy mentioned one of them, but we had great presentations by our Economic Development Department and by our Tourism Department. Good things are happening there and the efficient use of our monies, and that's most important. As Tudy mentioned, we had the town hall last night, we also, the three of us attended the Clackamas County Business Alliance yesterday morning, at which time their interest is in, similar to ours, it's transportation, land use, but specifically land use in their case. We will be working towards a resolution about what our ask will be of the legislature, and that will happen at the end of October, mid-November, by latest December 3rd, when we'll have it together and be able to ask the legislatures for certain fixes to address our needs. I'm, I'm going to go to the, do a trail count on Sunday at the, for the NCPRD out in beautiful Boring, Oregon. Are we, is it boring and dull, or is it dull and boring, the relationship they have with dull Scotland? But we're just going to stand around and ask people how much they use the trail, how much they like the trail, and this is important information gathering. Next week, I have a meeting with the other two county chairs, Andy Dyke and Deborah Cifori. We had these before, when there was a void that occurred, and when Deborah took office, I initiated meeting again because it's always nice to compare our concerns, problems, and victories with other close-by counties. There will be a Clackamas County Community Festival, food, information boost, music, and everyone is welcome. It will be held on our Red Soils Campus, so you can come up to 205-1 Southeast Cane Road, K-A-E-N Road, and it's between our two big buildings here, and it's the Red Soils Campus. And it is September And it is September seventeenth, that's a Wednesday, from eleven a.m. to two p.m. September is National Voters Registration Month. Now, this is interesting because our president said that there is a failure by failing to register to vote, that we have a civic obligation to vote, and it weakens our system if you do not vote. And so this president declared September of nineteen sixty-two National Voter Registration Month. Yes, it was John F. Kennedy. And you know, it's not so much the failure to register now because when I first got to vote, the privilege of voting, I had to stand in line. And the May one was kind of okay, but November got a little cold, rainy, wet, windy, and you know what? There would be lines around the block to be able to get in to vote because they felt it was a privilege and a necessity that they vote. That isn't anymore. Now we have general apathy about voting. People get mailed the thing. All it takes is a stamp. You don't have to vote for everybody on the darn thing. Vote for the issues or people you care about and vote. But it's, when we see thirty-six, thirty-eight percent turnout, that's a travesty, folks. It's your right, and certainly we hear especially people complaining about things, whether it's national, state, or even local issues. Well, if you don't vote, I'm not saying you don't have a right to complain, but you're not helping to correct the problems, are you? So anyway, I want to read that into the record, and John F. Kennedy, one more important thing, he said, "Mothers all want their sons to grow up to be president, but they don't want them to become politicians in the process." That fit her well. And I think the last thing, Mary, do you have that one? It is a hundred-year celebration of the Canby Ferry. So this is an event that you can attend, and parking is a problem, so I'll mention that. If you're coming, you want to be on the Canby side, by the way, unless you expect to be ferried over, and there's no parking over on the Stafford side, I will tell you that. So our invitation is to join the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners to celebrate the hundredth-year anniversary of the Canby Ferry, Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Now, this says two to three p.m. The other one said something else, I think, but is it two to three? Is that given? That's a pretty short time. I think here, it says eleven a.m. to two on this one. I can't be just for an hour, for goodness sakes, can I? Do we know that?
Well, they figured it'd take an hour for you to tow that thing across with a rope.
Yeah, well, I don't swim like that anymore, but thanks for the confidence in me. I appreciate that. We might want to check that because it's an hour. Now, if it's an hour, maybe this during the presentation for commissioners, et cetera.
This flyer probably shows the time that you guys are going to be doing a presentation.
Correctly. Okay. So it will be, just clarification, two p.m. to three p.m. That day, September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Parking is limited. The official address is four one-one-nine North Locust Street in Canby. Hop aboard the ferry for a leisurely two-and-a-half-minute trip across the Willamette River. Witness the unveiling of an historic interpretive panel and custom-made commemorative plaque created by the Clackamas County metal artist, Ron Grubbs. There will be refreshments, a ceremony, after the ceremony, refreshments, music, fun ferry facts, and souvenirs. So again, the parking arrangement is that you should park in Molalla River State Park. So that's, the entrance is very close to the ferry. Go ahead and park there, and there'll be shuttles running about every five minutes to get you to this celebration. But if you try to park anywhere around the ferry itself, it's going to be a real tough time for you. So the directions are exit Oregon five fifty-one via exit two eighty-two, that's the Aurora Canby exit, and turn left on Art Road, continue on Knightsbridge Road, turn left on the Holly Street, follow Holly Street to Thirty-seventh Avenue. The park is on the left. If you're coming from ninety-nine E., which is in Canby at that point, and Oregon City, just, well, follow ninety-nine South to Canby, and then turn right onto Territorial Road, turn right onto Holly Street, and follow Holly Street to Thirty-seventh Avenue. As long as you're on Holly Street and you're heading east, you're going to run into that river. So anyway, that is the conclusion of the duties that I have to perform here. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you taking your time today to either listen in or watch us or be here and at the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Wish you a good week, and this meeting is adjourned.